Good evening. It is 5:30 PM and we'll start tonight's evening with by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's informational session will be going over the public safety needs assessment by BKV. And I'll have Chad Ubel go ahead and introduce BKV for us.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor and Council, back in June of 2021, you authorized the staff to hire BKV to study the feasibility of a new public safety building that would house our police and fire departments. BKV's primary direction was to assess the current conditions at both the police and fire, analyze data regarding response time, recommend possible locations, and provide a preliminary cost estimate. Tonight, you're going to hear information regarding their findings. The information recommendations do not bind you to a decision tonight. Obviously, this is not an action item tonight. We would perhaps though seek some direction from you on next steps. And again, those next steps will be discussed at the end of BKV's presentation. And of course, following your questions and subsequent discussion. So with that, Mayor, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Bruce Schwartzman and the team from BKV.
Absolutely. Hi, Bruce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you all again. My name is Bruce Schwartzman. I'm a partner with BKV Group. I head up our government sector. I have with me Craig Carter, who is our fire station expert and does a lot of fire station work around the country for us. Mike Healy handles a lot of our law enforcement planning as well. So I have the core team that's been working with you since June here. This is, just like Chad had mentioned, this is a workshop for us. This is a chance for us to present our information to all of you and to answer your questions as we go through this. As we're presenting material, if you have questions, we want to engage. We want this to be collaborative like the entire process was in the planning as we've done so far. When you're looking at fire stations, there's some critical aspects to public safety facilities. Fire stations are all about location. It's all about the chief and his staff responding in a timely way to get to all the areas in the community to provide and to minimize safety to individuals, damage to structures, all those types of things that are critical. So when you look at a fire station, you look at where it's located and their ability to respond. You also look at the types of space they have. In modern day fire stations, when we plan them, we try to integrate as much. It's one thing, I should back up. It's one thing to provide space for the fire, for the fire trucks, for the apparatus, for the various programs they have. But it's also critical to provide as much space within that building for training. Training is critical. When you look at what they do and what they do for the community, being able to respond and provide the services they need requires regular training. So training in stations is something we plan. On the police department, again, we looked at in your facilities, you're currently leasing space from the county, and it's substandard. To be quite candid, it's substandard. You have areas that Mike will talk about a little bit, you know, where you have gun cleaning or in a break area, you know, which is clearly a hazardous situation. And you don't have adequate space for the police. Police likewise is very similar in fire in training aspects. The people that serve the community are only as good as the training they get on a regular basis. So having the ability for the police department to have different types of training within their facility or nearby is very important for them. So we looked at that kind of issues and went through it. So you'll hear tonight, the items that we're going to hit in the agenda, like Chad had mentioned, the operational assessment. So some will try to identify, and we didn't try to dig in every little thing. We tried to hit the main topics for fire and police. But we'll talk about the operational assessment, what we found that works, what we found didn't work will be the primary focus. We'll talk about space programming. How did we determine the size of the facilities that we're looking at and proposing right now? Craig and the team did a fairly extensive response time analysis to look at GIA's information and see what those response times are within the community based on the number of sites we looked at. Once the sites were identified, we did test plans. We looked at could this site accommodate the size of building we're looking to put on that site? You know, if it's not big enough, that's an issue right off that. Or if you have to acquire more property to make it work, that's an issue. So we looked at what we consider these kind of site tests or site fit plans. We have a recommendation on the site based on size, location. Did the city own it? Does the city not own it? Those types of things. We have some preliminary costs, and when we get into the cost, I'll talk about that more too because we're in a unique time. This is probably the understatement of the day. But you know, when you look at what the pandemic has done with material supplies, labor shortages from 2020 to 2021, there was like a 15% spike construction cost. So it's been all over the map. But we do have a very good cost estimate based on current cost and what we would anticipate. We'll talk about that. And I think the big important thing is next steps. Where do you go from here? What are some of the things? So again, I asked you all as we're going through the information, any questions at all, please don't hesitate to answer or ask. First topic I think we're going to be covering is the police station and some of the issues we found in the police station.
Good evening. I assume the presentation's rolling, right? So the first summary of the police station right now, it was on page, I think, four now. So a brief summary of the Winona Police Station, the building was built in 1977 and it's currently shared with the county sheriff. The police department occupies the entire second level of the building. And compared to other local departments and contemporary stations, the building is grossly undersized for the department. Also, it lacks efficient workflow, just the inherent layout of the facility. It also has security concerns for the staff as far as moving through the station, being able to secure certain areas. The current county LEC project that's going on for adding onto the jail will not address any of the needs of the police department as well. Thank you. So we conducted an operational assessment of the police station, walked through with staff, went through every space, understood their workflow for operations, some of their concerns, bringing our knowledge from working on stations all over Minnesota. These are some of our findings. The interview rooms right now are located within the secure zone. Typically, you'd want the interview rooms to be off of a public lobby space. You're not bringing people back into a secure space with potential security risks and staff and so forth. It's also very poor acoustics with the interview rooms and the conference space that are provided. If the department's having interviews or meetings in their conference room, you can easily hear what's going on in the public lobby. The lobby does not provide accessible restrooms for ADA access as well as the public face and reception counter is not ballistic, reinforced with ballistic resistant materials for safety of staff. There, like I mentioned earlier, some operational workflow and movement issues with the building. Staff share a same corridor and staircase that the building uses for moving inmates back and forth, which is a potential security risk to staff and unsafe situation, obviously. Next slide. As far as some of the work areas for the police department, the work areas are very small and cramped. The station has very limited storage, so a lot of the storage is in their workspaces. You're seeing supplies, equipment piled up in what should be break rooms, offices, and so forth. Their roll call room is used for multiple functions. Right now, it's used for report writing, roll call, storage, and I think mail supply room. This creates operational inefficiencies and interruptions throughout the day as shift changes and people are moving in and out of the space to complete reports. The break room, which you'll see in the photo in the top right there, is not much of a break room. It's a storage closet. It's also used for their weapon cleaning. So you have potentially hazardous chemicals for clean weapons and blood contamination that are exposing staff's food and utensils and so forth in that same area. Typically, for weapon cleaning room, you would also see a discharge chamber for safely discharging weapons. There's no space in this room to install that unfortunately. Also would be adequate ventilation to remove the potential fumes and contaminants from that space, which is not provided in the current room. The image on the bottom left is the evidence processing room, which also suffers from proper decontamination, equipment, proper ventilation. You don't have access to a hand sink to wash your hands or an eye wash station if the employee is exposed to something hazardous. Without a complete exhaust ventilation system in those rooms too, you have the risk of contaminants traveling throughout the entire building. Typically, an evidence processing room is also located adjacent to an evidence storage room, so you're not having to transport evidence throughout a building. Currently, they have to transport evidence through several corridors and up and downstairs, which is makes it very difficult to maintain a chain of custody at times. Potential issues there. The evidence processing room also lacks eye wash station and hand wash sink, just like the weapon cleaning area. Next slide, please. The staff restrooms and locker rooms are not fully accessible for staff as far as Minnesota Accessibility Code guidelines require. The locker rooms are also fully at capacity. And the lockers that are in the staff locker rooms are very small compared to modern day law enforcement lockers. So it doesn't store all the gear and equipment that the officers use nowadays. The indoor parking area for the police department right now is very limited and they actually cannot use it for parking squads at all because of a plumbing issue where the floor drains leak into the evidence storage room. And a lot of those spaces that are supposed to be for vehicles are currently used for storage of equipment. The department has a lot of tactical gear, other large equipment that can't be stored in a typical kind of office environment, and that's taking up spaces where their squads should be parked. Parking squads outdoors is very hard on the equipment as well. The officers have to leave their vehicles running the entire time. It's hard on the batteries, hard on especially medical equipment, special devices in the cars. So parking those indoors in a temperate environment is ideal. Staff parking is extremely limited around the area as well. Staff have to park down the street, walk quite a ways, sometimes move their cars throughout the day. And they're also parked in an unsecure area, potential for unsafe situation to happen. And the staff entry is also rather unsecure. It's pretty much in the public parking lot. So there's a security risk there. An important feature of modern police and fire stations is training, like Bruce has mentioned. The Winona Police Station is very, very limited on training. They do share a small classroom, but it's kind of undersized for the department. The department is looking to have more specialized training areas such as situational training and offensive tactical training spaces to meet their current goals for training. I'll let Craig move into the fire department.
Thank you, Mike. So the the fire station was built more than 60 years ago. And certainly, the city has invested frugally in some updates over that period of time, and the fire department has invested significantly with their sweat equity to keep the building up to shape and make sure that it's maintained and cleaned properly. But the fact of the matter with this facility is it's a little bit too small and it does not meet today's standards. And you know, while nobody really likes to hear that, it's important to understand that the city has certainly gotten its expected useful life out of it. You've gotten your money's worth with this facility. Some specific issues, and these are in no particular order, just like the police ones. Some of these will resonate with different people than other these points, but they're all important. And it's really a sampling of the total list of things that we have in the report. You know, there's a little bit more in depth in the final report when we finish that and submit that. So again, in no particular order, there's no elevator in this building. It's a two-story facility. But where the fire chief's office is and the fire marshal's office is on the second floor, and the public should be expected to be able to visit those folks right now with no elevator, that's not possible. In general, there's a lack of office type space in the facility. There are insufficient actual offices for people. There's no conference room where the officers can meet as a group or a station officer can meet with perhaps one of the firefighters for a disciplinaring or some other sort of meeting. There's a a lack of storage space throughout the facility. And you notice this throughout as you go on a tour, certainly the apparatus space are full of stuff, but this also occurs with the office type stuff, all of the files that are necessary to keep for statutory reasons have piled up, and some of them are even having to be stored in the women's locker room now. There's just so little space. There's a training room at the facility slash office slash corridor that seats a small fraction of the number of people that it needs to. For a department of this size, we need to be thinking more along the lines of 40 seats in a conference room like this or in a training room like this. And if you want to have some regional training capabilities where you cooperate with your neighbors, because someday there will be a big event where you need to cooperate with your neighbors, then you certainly want to have more seats so you can bring those folks in as well. Right now, the fire department operates with a model that has full-time staff, career staff, as well as some part-time folks who are, you know, potentially going to move into the full-time role. But for right now, they provide essential support whenever there's a large event. And you know, that's the group of people that's very hard to get into the training room when you have all your career staff there. And perhaps the group of people who are most important to bring into those training elements because they have less experience on a kind of a day-to-day basis. There is a communal sleeping room above the fire station, which was very common when this was built, but is has not been created in a new fire station in a very long time, not just in Minnesota, but across the United States. Communal sleeping rooms have a few issues that you might expect. Certainly, there's gender privacy issues which are a big concern. There's also sleep deprivation issues. You know, we can't control when the calls come in for the fire department. Sometimes you're going to be woken up in the middle of the night and you have to respond and spend several hours out on a call. But we do want to make sure that our firefighters are able to do their jobs effectively, and part of that is making sure that they are well rested. Because if you're not well rested, if you have a pattern of poor sleep caused by your work situation, then that can lead to poor decision-making and drowsiness and disrespect for authority and a whole host of long-term health issues as well, including cancer and heart disease, diabetes. So sleep deprivation and being able to get good sleep is important, and the communal sleeping area kind of interferes with that. And then, of course, with COVID, we all understand that infectious disease can easily transfer between people when you're sharing a room, and it's not safe to sleep with a mask on, perhaps a CPAP machine, but not one of these things. So communal sleeping rooms and fire departments across the country have been unfortunately responsible for many huge staffing issues within fire departments over the last couple of years as entire shifts kind of go down with COVID. And especially concerning since the firefighters are some of the frontline people dealing with this, making sure that they transport people to the hospital when they're having issues. So communal sleeping rooms are no longer what we try to do. The locker rooms across the hall from the communal sleeping room are at capacity. There's actually not enough locker space for all of those part-time folks. The women's locker room, like I said, is actually full of files as well as lockers. There are some usable lockers in there as well. There's carpet all over the second floor of the fire station, which is nice on the feet, but it also has a tendency to collect all of that soot that you bring back from a fire or even, you know, MRSA or other resistant bacteria from a hoarder's house or from a medical call. If you're going into nursing home, a lot of times you'll see some really nasty bacteria that might be might be sitting in the carpets there, and you can bring that in and it can get all through the carpet in your fire station. So then it gets transferred, obviously, to everybody else's feet and potentially brought home to people's families. So all of those carcinogens and all those nasty bugs, we want to make sure that we're able to scrub the floors very clean, which means hard surfaces. There's three fire poles in the facility, which is really cool. Unfortunately, those fire poles are a little older. There's no actual fire resistance rating of those fire poles. So any fire that starts in the actual apparatus space and, you know, aside from kitchen fires, the engine spontaneously catching on fire because of electrical issues is the most common. Well, I guess it's really the second most common cause of fires in a fire station after the kitchen issue. So having no sort of fire resistance rating between the garage space and the living spaces upstairs is a point of concern. In addition, they don't really seal all that well. So some of those fumes you get off of the diesel exhaust trucks and, you know, whatever fumes are kind of offgassing from fire trucks when they come back from a fire can kind of tend to waft upstairs into the sleeping room and the dining room type of spaces as well. So this is an issue with the facility. The next slide. Maybe I step away just a little bit. There we go. Sure. And again, please feel free to speak up if you guys have any questions. The next page, the physical training facility was one way wish the station was adapted to meet the needs of the fire department over time. Unfortunately, it has a pretty low ceiling height, which restricts a lot of the activities that firefighters can do in terms of exercise. There is an ice maker and a washing machine downstairs in the apparatus bay where they can easily be contaminated by diesel exhaust fumes or by the contaminants that you bring back from a fire and sort of wash off the truck or off gas from your personal protective equipment that you could bring back from a fire. There, the PPE, the personal protective equipment, is actually stored inside the apparatus space, which again is very, very common when this was built. Nowadays, the PPE manufacturers frown on that significantly because it can lead to exposure to UV light, which degrades the performance of that gear. You want to keep it in a very dark space, but it also allows that gear to be exposed to the diesel exhaust. And that's not only damaging to the gear itself in terms of its chemical makeup, but it also means you're potentially shouldering or putting on gear that has diesel soot in it, which is not pleasant for anybody. The SCBA compressor is inside the apparatus base. Again, not an uncommon solution. But this is more of a noise pollution issue. Those things are incredibly loud, and if you're inside the building, inside those apparatus space, when the compressor turns on, that can potentially lead to hearing loss after long-term exposure. Certainly unpleasant for anybody who's in that space. There's no continuous exhaust system in the apparatus space that keeps that portion of the building negatively pressurized compared to the rest of this facility, which means that air can very easily transfer back and forth between those spaces and areas that you would want to be a lot cleaner, like your workout room or your communal sleeping room or the training room or those types of spaces. So that's one way in which contaminants that are inside the apparatus bay are leaking kind of throughout the rest of the spaces through those pole holes and other pathways. We'd certainly recommend kind of a long-term continuous exhaust strategy for any new fire station to make sure that that's negatively pressurized and you can control to the extent possible all those contaminants and where they're headed within the facility. The station lacks some of those decontamination and handwashing strategies as you're moving between contaminated areas and clean areas of the station. Aside from, you know, soot and antibiotic-resistant bacteria being on your feet and kind of picking those up as you're walking around in the apparatus bay or anywhere else and moving those into the clean areas. The other way that you can easily contaminate the clean areas is through your hands. If you're inside the apparatus space and you touch basically anything, you can assume that it has some small level of diesel particulate or something from a fire ground, some nasty chemical that was burning at a fire ground kind of on your hands then that you're getting from whatever you touched in there. And then you go back in the kitchen, you pour yourself a pot of coffee or something like that, and now those contaminants are on the coffee pot. And so things migrate back and forth through that way. So washing your hands is the best way to prevent that sort of migration on your hands. So in modern stations, we see handwashing facilities everywhere. You might leave the contaminated area and go into the clean areas, and those are not present on this facility. Next slide, please. The station is not designed with drive-through apparatus space. There are a lot of doors on the station, but but it's all set up for backing the apparatus in off the street. Backing is inherently dangerous because it's very difficult to see around these big pieces of equipment. And so there's a definite increased risk to, you know, getting your toes run over or running into the walls or a piece of equipment that's behind you as you're kind of backing this up. The apparatus doors themselves actually are not large enough to accommodate tomorrow's equipment. You barely scrape by with today's aerial apparatus. But it won't be more than a handful of years before a new tower will not fit in the station at all. Let's do more to the height than to the width, but the width is actually problematic as well. These bays are very, very close together. There's not much walking space in between the apparatus, and that presents, again, a problem when you're responding to a call and maybe multiple apparatus are pulling out. You might be walking up to your apparatus while the apparatus next to you is fully staffed already and trying to leave the building, and that's just, it's too close for comfort. Some of the apparatus spaces are actually a little bit smaller than the others. That provides limited amount of flexibility for how you can station or space the apparatus within the building. Certainly, the department has some smaller apparatus and they're making use of those smaller bays, but long-term, you know, we don't know that those types of apparatus won't get larger. It does seem like all our apparatus is getting larger on a day-to-day basis. If you check tomorrow, they're going to be a little bit bigger than they were today. The training tower in the back is an important asset for any fire department. This one unfortunately is a little bit constrained by the alley, by the power lines that run right next to it, by the fact that it's actually attached and almost within the building. Kind of goes from inside to outside, to inside to outside a little bit as you go up and down, which provides some good training opportunities, but it also provides some significant challenges. And because it's also one of the main access points to get down into the apparatus space from the upper level, you can't do any sort of training that involves contaminated stuff without risk of further contaminating the clean parts of the station. So you don't really want to be wearing all of your turnout gear and your SCBA masks and all those things that have potentially been to a fire. And even though they've been cleaned, they're not 100% clean. So it really limits what you can do there because it's used for more than one thing. The HVAC systems in the building are, again, pretty state-of-the-art for when the building was built 60 some odd years ago, but not up to today's standards. Certainly do not provide the the different separate air zones between contaminated and clean areas, but also don't provide the level of comfort that our staff has come to expect. And don't provide the level of fresh air intake that the staff should be expecting. With the fire department, the air conditioning isn't just a luxury. It's essential to cool your body down after being in a thousand-plus degree building for a long period of time. It takes actually a long time to reduce your core body temperature back down to where it should be, and appropriate air conditioning is is one of the major ways that fire departments achieve that these days. Doing it in a timely manner is important to your long-term health. So through-the-wall window air conditioners that the fire department is currently using for that purpose are not adequate for what we would expect. And, you know, one that's near and dear to the fire department's heart, you know, the building is not equipped with an automatic fire suppression system. It doesn't have sprinklers. That's a tough thing when you are trying to convince developers to install sprinkler systems in all their new buildings, and they come to visit you to talk about it, and they don't see evidence of one in your own facility. Certainly expensive to retrofit into the facility, but that's part of the reason why you're looking at replacement.
So after understanding the buildings a little bit, they're
So after understanding the buildings a little bit, there, there, there's some of their shortcomings and some of their opportunities. And the next step of the study is really to understand what kind of spaces are needed for the police and fire. Not too close to the microphone, am I just to check good? So what, there's some national standards that we look at when we talk about. Fire station, when we talk about police stations and it's predicated on, you know, the size and number of apparatus they have. Size of the staff they have, the types of state, basically need to support the staff. For the police department, again, how much evidence they currently have, how much evidence they process through. How many report writing stations they need for the number of patrol officers. And again, in today's current law enforcement design. Having space to park the vehicles in a tempered space helps to protect Narcan. It helps protect the computers, you know, the, some of the medical. Equipment that's in some of the squads, some of the, 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 the guns and the other things that are needed and some of these, and some of the law enforcement vehicles. You want to protect those and they're better from being out in the elements. So we went through a series of workshops with the fire department and police department. And we looked at all their equipment. We looked at all their operations and what that. Totaled up into is the various types of spaces they need, needed for each department. To then help further confirm that the space we were identifying was, was real and appropriate for their, for your department. We went ahead and toured two facilities, two newly completed facilities. We went and toured Fridley. And we went towards our tell and that was with a, a kind of a building committee group that joined the two chiefs and us in looking at these facilities. We were able during the tour to look at a training room and say, okay, here's a training room that's. Two thousand square feet and it's going to accommodate fifty people. That would make sense for you. Here's an apparatus bay eighty-eight feet deep, eighteen feet wide. You can see the clearances like Craig was talking about for proper operations. So we went through and very, very diligently qualified the spaces that we identified in the space program to make sure they were appropriate for Winona. We do that in, in increments of five, ten, fifteen years, fifty, well, in this particular case, five, ten, twenty years. And we do that primarily, we're looking at staff growth and potential equipment or operational changes. So you can see that you might start off with a certain number and really what typically is impacted is there might be some additional staffing changes or predicted staffing changes. That might require some additional bunk room, some additional report writing area, maybe an additional squad car. As the certain, as the city population gets to a certain point. So you can see we've identified roughly almost five thousand, a little over five thousand square feet increase. Between what the immediate need is and potential twenty-year planning. That breaks down to the square footage below. And another thing I should say, as we were doing this, we're looking for shared opportunities. So if the, if the facilities were built independently, you're going to build a certain amount of, of meeting space in each. That by having them together, you can now create shared opportunity. You've got an entrance in a public lobby or some kind of greeting space. Again, by putting them together, now you can create some space, space efficiency. As well as mechanical, electrical systems that support the building, there's efficiency by putting all that together. So. Again, as we look through the planning and the programming, we looked at those opportunities for shared space to try to consolidate and create as an efficient space program as possible. And these are kind of the breakdowns of the various areas, public area, shared areas. We identified. Fire-specific spaces, police, which I think does include the squad garage. So it does include a squad garage in that, in that twenty thousand nine hundred and seventeen square feet. Training areas that we could talk about a little more, but we identified specifically training that support fire and police. And then general billing support spaces.
Bruce, quick question?
Yes, sir.
Explain grossing factor.
Oh, good point. So when, when an architect or planner does a program. What we're meeting and identifying is the council chamber needs to be twenty-five hundred square feet. And we're taking and looking at each block. The offices needs to be a hundred and twenty square feet. So the program identifies each little block. Grossing factors, which typically are about thirty-five percent, well, this is thirty percent. Is taking and adding all the hallways and wall thicknesses to it. So we've identified the boxes and spaces needed. Now the grossing factor adds hallways and wall thicknesses so that when we're identifying it. And we've tested this against our final projects and we're pretty close. It's, it's not, it's not exactly, we're trying to always get close to it. But we want to make sure we're using appropriate grossing factors for these types of law enforcement, public safety needs that we know are appropriate. So those grossing factors may or. Help to give the overall square footage of the entire building.
Very good. Thank you.
On the next page. We then compiled, we, we like to benchmark. At the end of the day, you want to make sure whatever's being planned for your community first off, needs to appropriately serve. Serve the, the public safety department well and appropriately, not now, but for in the long term of the future of the city. But you also want to get a sense, or are we, are we planning a building that's within the same kind of limits that we would expect our neighbors are providing? So if you look at an older facility, it doesn't matter because a lot of times they have the same issue you do in their short-term space or they don't have this or they don't have. The proper operational spaces they need. Minnetoka just completed their facility. Minnetoka's a population of about fifty-four thousand people or so. Their facility combined was about sixty-five thousand square foot for the one they did, which is their public safety facility, which I believe was. Fire and police right now? Handled both of them. The Fridley facility, which was completed, I think about three years ago. Again, si- a similar city population to Winona. That was about seventy-seven thousand square foot for the, for the entire, for the gross area of the building. So our tell, which is a much smaller community, theirs was about forty-nine thousand square feet. And again, Columbia Heights, a smaller population than what's being dealt with here, about forty-six thousand. What that helps to identify is some of the populations that are very similar. Are within the line that we would expect for your facility as well. And then you'll notice some of the ones we've identified under number of apparatus bay. Which is, which is a fairly sizable contributor to the overall building. We've identified eight double bays to support your department. Some of those don't have that much space, but really that's predicated. When the fire equipment that you currently have in your facility and making sure you have adequate space for future. With that Craig's, and if there's any questions again, please don't hesitate to ask office. Oh, yes, sir.
Go ahead, George. Oh, thank you. No, I was on the tour with us when we went now. Did Fridley not have their city hall? In the same public safety building? One of those had a city hall in them.
Fridley has a city hall in it as well, but we took that area out of this, this number here. So the number that you have is strictly police and fire.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question? Can, can you help me understand? And, and clearly I'm new to this, but I, I see some. Large discrepancies in ratio between fire and police. For example, you, you look at, you look at Minnetoka there. Fire is substantially larger than police. Then look at, look at Fridley. And, and even with the question that George asked, I didn't clarify it for me. Why, why would these, why would there be such a large discrepancy? Is this. Trade-offs or priorities or?
Typically it has to do with the squad garage. Fridley's squad garage was fairly large. And so when you look at the squad garage number, a lot of times that will, that's what will push. Your police number up higher. Your fire should be fairly comparable, but it depends on the level of admin, if it's an administrative type function. And the amount of equipment. Again, when you look at Minnetoka, their fire had. Four double bays and sleep, three small sleeping areas, which were fairly small. You know, Fridley's fire was fairly large as well, and I'm not sure.
So, so Fridley just has a lot of police cars?
It, it, in essence, it had a very large. And, and part of that.
Trying to get it.
Part of that was predicated when, when the, when the footprint of the building was created. The most economical was to drop that footprint down and create the squad, squad garage, shooting range, evidence storage, things like that below.
Alright, thank you. Michelle?
I, I just have one question. Can you remind me how many of these are similar to Winona in that they also do regional? Like our fire department will go out to even Wisconsin when called. They have mutual aid agreements. So. I'm not sure how much that plays into it. I know some of the police will. Like our department will back up good view and likewise, I mean, it's not like we're limited to the square footage of just Winona. So I'm wondering, I can't quite remember how many of these have a similar situation to us from a size perspective.
It's interesting and the chief might want to address that. As far as I know, most fire departments have mutual aid. Agreements with all other areas and the same thing with police to a little lesser extent, if they're needed with certain ones. I'm not sure that's ever impacted the area and the space needs, but chief, if you want to address that a little?
If, if I could maybe just touch on that. The, the unique thing about the metro is they, they, they have mutual aid agreements throughout. With Winona, we're kind of a rare animal in the sense that we're the ones actually. You know, sending out aid to other departments and, and we go to Wisconsin, we've been to Iowa for rail derailments. Currently, a lot of that stuff's actually stored out in our parking lot, equipment-wise. So it, it's tough to compare an apple to an orange as far as, you know, Sartell, when we visited Sartell. It, it was basically they, they ran fire out of that. I, I don't think they provided. High-level rescue hazmat confined space trench rescue.
This might be a better question then. How many of them have near cities that have full-time fire departments? Like for us. What is the nearest city we have that has a full-time fire department besides Winona?
Be La Crosse or Rochester.
So how many of those have a similar, like I think Minnetoka probably is pretty close, but I'm wondering about the other, maybe even Fridley, but I'm wondering. About the others, because that would change for me what they might do.
And, and what you've seen over probably the last six, seven, eight years, a lot of this, and I deal with the south metro more so as far as chief meetings and everything else. Just in the last seven years, I, I would say seventy percent of the, the, the southern chiefs, the southern metro chiefs. Have gone to a full-time fire department just because they're running into staffing issues and they, they can't support. Duty crews or coming up with unique ways to staff stations. And, and what you also see, you know, it, during that transition up in the metro, they, they started out as a small. Suburb and they, what they did, they were smart about it. They plotted three, four, five stations to meet the, the response needs. And the consolidation end of it and the staffing thing all comes to play and then pretty soon the square footage changes. And then your specialties add to the square footage changes. So it's kind of a cum, you know, cumulative event that, that you see throughout the progression of, of departments, especially up in the metro, it's all changing.
So I know, because I was a part of the committee, but you've worked really closely with them to come up with this number because you're, you're satisfied that. Both of you, that the sizes they represented here are what we actually are going to need in the next twenty years.
For the square footage, yeah. And, and we really don't have an issue, you know, with, with, with the staffing end of it. Because we're probably only going to have a sing, single engine responding out of that station. So, you know, we weren't. Looking at a population growth of thirty thousand people or we had to add two more engines and a, a truck company. I mean, we're pretty set geographically and, and so forth as far as numbers. And we discussed, you know, if, if we did go forty-three, start expanding up there, we'd, we'd have to look at population numbers. And, and we'd have to probably look at a, a third station for a single engine. So.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
We'll get George and then Steve.
Oh, when we were in, I believe it was Fridley where the squad cars were parked, did that, that also served as a employee parking area as well, correct?
Yeah, they, 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 they play a little domino game where the, when they, when the officer comes in, they basically. Pull in, pull their squad out, pull their personal vehicle in to minimize some of the staffing impacts around. And then they take the squad when they go.
Thank you.
And if I could, one, one, two responses, I was just going through the numbers as we, we were talking and you're right. The discrepancy for Fridley is quite large for police and that was definitely the squad garage.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I could ask a follow-up to Chief Peddle. Do, does Winona Fire have some unique capabilities that maybe some of these metro? Departments wouldn't. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to butcher this, uh, uh, Cliff Rescue, Water Rescue, that, that, so I'm, I'm pressing this regional asset. Type thing. What, what, give, give me a quick rundown of things we might be doing that, 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 that maybe Minnetoka, Fridley's not doing.
Absolutely. And geographically, everything dictates that. We deal with Mississippi River. They, I guarantee these. Departments don't have soap water teams or, or an elaborate water rescue element. They may have some. Attempt at high-level rescue, but they're not dealing with bluffs. And we have different pieces of equipment and we have a, a, an ice climbing wall that, that. It initiated a four-wheel drive vehicle that, you know, a, a four-wheeler and, and equipment. I, I, there's just small little things that. That add up square footage-wise after a while, that a lot of these metro departments just don't see or, or don't have. And I would, I would argue our hazmat side of it is probably a little more robust equipment-wise. Just for the simple fact that in a metro department, you might have six, seven different departments responding with different hazmat. Pieces to meet the needs. We, we're trying to cover all ends in Winona, which, which eats up space. So.
Thank you. Go ahead. Thanks, Ruth.
I think the next piece we want to cover is response time. Once we had an idea in the area, then it was okay, where might the station be located? That was predicated like I talked about earlier, where's the best location based on response time for the fire department?
I get to talk again. Thank you, Bruce. Try to adjust the microphone a little bit ahead of time this, this go-around. Just yell at me if I'm being too loud. Okay. I get accused of being too loud in the office too. Not that that's much of an excuse. So as Bruce alluded to at the very beginning of, of our talk today, response time is incredibly important for fire departments and. That's because there's, there's a kind of an exponential progression of, of how much damage a fire can do. Over time. So when you look at how much time it takes for you to identify that there's a fire. Call somebody, well, first get to safety, then call nine-one-one. Nine-one-one takes your information down. Sends out information to the fire department, dispatches them. The crews stop whatever they're doing at the time. Training or, or working out or having a meeting or whatever it is. They go and they get their gear on, they get on the apparatus, they leave the doors, then they have to drive to wherever the event is. And we want all that to take as little time as possible because every, every moment that, that goes by, the fire is getting larger and larger and larger. That's more risk to, to people who might be trapped there. It's more risk to, to property, more risk to the adjacent properties. Very similar issues with, with EMS results. Obviously, the, the longer that you're in cardiac arrest, the less your chances of surviving that. So we want to get people to. To all sorts of injuries and illnesses and stuff like that as quickly as possible. So response time is, is obviously critical to what the fire department's doing. So we're looking for a location that, that is going to provide good response times. Now, the, the National Fire Protection Agency. Has set national guidelines for, for target response times for, for career departments and for volunteer departments. We don't qualify as a volunteer department here. So we're looking at career department numbers and they set specific response time. Goals and they're broken up into a couple of different parts. The first part is, is about dispatching. From the moment that the call rings in your dispatching center to, to the moment that they notify. Whatever crews are going out has a certain block of time and they, and they want. The NFPA wants you to achieve your, your dispatching within that certain group, amount of time. Then there's another little block of time for the fire department personnel to stop whatever they're doing, you know, turn off the stove, they're cooking or something like that. And get to the apparatus, get their gear on, get in and, and start to move. And so that's called turnout time and. And there's a specific benchline goal for that. And then there's a third group, which is called drive time. And drive time, basically from, from the moment you roll out the doors to when you show up on scene is what we call drive time and drive time. Is, is really the only thing that we can affect by station location plotting. We're gonna, obviously for all of our clients, do our best to make sure that the fire stations that we design are designed to get people from every. Every little corner of that building into the apparatus base and on the trucks as quickly as possible. And so that's, that's one of the major priorities in fire station design. We don't have much control over the dispatching. That's, that's largely a software issue, but I'm sure you guys are up to speed on that. But we do have with this project an opportunity to, to kind of li- take a look at response times from a. From a location standpoint. And if we, if we relocated the building from where it is currently, can we improve response times or are we going to take a hit to response times? So the way that the national standard's written is we want to be able to achieve a four-minute drive time. To ninety percent of the events we encounter. And so we're understanding that sometimes we have a call in Wisconsin and we're, you know, we're driving a little bit further to get there. And so we're not going to achieve that within our, within our four-minute threshold. That's going to be one of those ten percent that we don't achieve. Sometimes you're going to have multiple calls at the same time. So you're going to have to send the west station over to the far east end because. So you're going to have to send the west station over to the far east end because, you know, the east station is already deployed. Um, so that's not going to, you're not going to be able to capture that within the within the ninety percent threshold. Some some parts of town are just a little bit farther away than four minutes. You know, and people understand that when they move there that they're not right next to a fire station. So they're they're hoping for a a six minute drive time or something like that themselves, but that falls with outside that forty four minute threshold and so. So we're understanding that ten percent of the calls aren't going to fall within that threshold, but the goal is to get to ninety percent. And. Uh, and that's, as I said, that's a national standard that that fire departments all across the country are trying to achieve. So when we looked at uh, the performance of Winona. We looked at kind of historic call data and tried to figure out, you know, where where your calls were originating. Now, it's important to, and and we compared those those locations to uh, potential locations within town where you could put a new fire facility. Um, so it's important to to recognize that when we started looking at at where we wanted to to put this fire station, we were looking at properties that were available at the time, you know, that were kind of on the market, if you will. That the the city thought that they could acquire or properties that were already owned by the city. Um, there wasn't much of a an appetite for uh, for seizing a a full block of single family homes. And and turning that into a new fire department site, I mean, from a financial standpoint, that's super expensive. Uh, but you're also displacing, you know, thirteen plus families. Um, who then would have to find somewhere else to go and and that's unpleasant as well. So we really focus on 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 sites that the city had control of or could get control of, um, and that kind of guided a lot of these things. So if you look at the the map here, you can see the seven sites plotted out. Um, we looked at uh, naturally enough, uh, the current central fire station site. We looked at Central Elementary School, um, not the, not the old school itself, but the half block to the to the west of it. Uh, we looked at the former YMCA building that um, is uh, is now, I think, off the table. As as much as maybe Central School is. We looked at um, where the ambulances um, kind of come out of down down over by the river on the west side of the bridge. That site, just to kind of preface it. It is in a flood plain, um, which is, which is kind of a bad idea for your public safety facility. It's also stuck behind a railroad track, which is uh, you know, potentially harmful to response times if you have trains running in front of your your apparatus base all the time. And it it's kind of in a in a little corner of the city that's difficult to get in and out of in a timely manner, so the response times on that one are going to be terrible. We looked at uh. Yeah, well, um, we looked at, it was available site, right? We looked at uh, the the East Rec Center site. Um, or on on Zambro Avenue there, we looked at uh, Sinclair Park. Which, you know, it it's always tough to look at park district properties, but uh, we look at Sinclair Park and we look at Gavage Park. Cause those are whole block uh, parks and that's probably about the size. Um, the looking at when you when you're looking at a facility of of seventy thousand square feet plus associated uh, parking and. And, you know, one of the things we didn't mention was the the apparatus space currently are right up against the street. Which you don't want, you want a little bit of space between where your apparatus doors are and where the street starts. So, you know, it takes up, it takes up some some real estate to do that. So those are the seven sites we look at, so we'll we'll get into on the next page, looking at some of the, some of the. Some of the existing call data, so we went back. I think it was about two and a half years, about ten thousand calls that the fire department received for all sorts of different things. And uh, we combed through there and we got rid of the ones that were uh, they were erroneous or had bad data and stuff like that, but. Um, but we plotted kind of hotspot maps to give us a general sense geographically of of where the fire department has to go. Uh, more frequently than other than other parts. Um, so on the far far left hand side of the slide, it's it's everything that the department responds to. We also segmented out by by EMS calls versus. Non EMS calls, just because people are frequently curious about that and and certainly there's more EMS related calls than actual fires. And and fire rated calls, related calls, um, but both are both are vitally important to the community that they be responded to in a timely manner. Um, so what you see and you also see here, uh, a couple of little stars that indicate where the where the central station is and where the main and where the west station is. So you can kind of get a ballpark of of where in the city you're at. Stuff off to the uh, the west side of the city, basically west of the bridge, more or less, um, gets responded to out of the west side and and stuff. You know, mostly to the east of the bridge gets responded to out of the central station. Um, and so for the central station, for the west station, there's a, there's a few hotspots out there associated with, you know, students. Surprise. Um, but for the for the central station, there's a couple of hotspots right kind of near downtown. Um, and a couple of of housing uh, areas that that do get a lot of calls. And so we have those those couple of hotspots that we're concerned about, certainly they had, there's the calls to those, those locations are a little bit more frequent than other places and so. As we're looking at overall response times, we're looking not only at. You know, how much land area we can cover with our stations, but also making sure that we can get to those those hotspots within a timely manner. Because if we miss those hotspots, if those are outside our thresholds, then we're going to take a severe penalty to our response time analyses. So and we'll show those uh, those graphs kind of behind uh, some of the images going forwards, you can see where those hotspots kind of lie. So the first page um, here, we're actually looking at response times, I want to take this opportunity to to talk about the the uh, the legend here. We in in green, we're showing the. The four minute drive time uh, perimeter that our uh, that our software is predicting. Um, and this is uh, this is ArcGIS by Esri, you know, it's the same software that planning departments worldwide use, um, it's. It's used for this type of thing, you know. Um, all over the world every day, um, so it's it's uh, the appropriate software to use, there's there's competitors, but but Esri's probably the biggest one, so. We're we're competent in the numbers, um, that said, we know that, you know, if the firefighter understands that the call is going to be kind of at the edge of their. Um, their perimeter, they might be a little heavier on the gas. Then then if the call is right down the street, so there there is some flexibility, you know, this doesn't account for traffic at certain times of day. It doesn't account for construction. So so these are still ballparks, this is still, um, this is an estimate. But we're applying this software equally across all the sites. So while there will be discrepancies for exactly, you know, on from day to day, you know, how far a firefighter can get in four minutes. This is a good, the good way for us to compare sites to each other.
Sorry, I just want to to break in here for a second with a question. Um, since we didn't hear from our police expert, can we assume for the public that we're doing the fire? Because it doesn't matter as much where the police station is, but it does matter very much where the fire department is. In relation, not only to what you're talking about here, because they do most of the um, medical emergency and fire calls out, but because um, of the rating and insurance rates and. All the other rigmarole that goes into their, the number that they're ultimately assessed with in our city. I just want to make sure everyone out there in the public knows what we're talking about, why this is relevant and important.
Excellent question. It is, it is more critical for the fire than it is for the police. Police typically are out patrolling the neighborhoods and providing the support. When it comes to first responders, when we when we when we reference first responders, that really is police and fire. So when you do have an incident, a lot of times it's police and fire that are that are turning out. It is always the fire department that's responding from the station. So when Craig talks about some of the response time, it is more critical that that fire station be at the absolute best location, I should expect. And another thing, too, I wanted to clarify, the diagram he was talking about with time, just to clarify, was the was the diagram on the left.
Yes, thank you. The, you know, I did, I did go into a little bit about about the outcomes in a fire or or for health reasons why location is important, but. But you're right, that's picked up by the insurance companies, too. The insurance companies want you to be as close as possible to your fire station. And um, especially on the commercial side and industrial side, your rates will will go down if you're if you're, you know, close to a fire station. It has a little bit less of an impact, uh, we're told on the residential side of things. But um, but there there is a an overall rating that a company. Uh, called ISO gives to a community for, based on um. Your water supply and your emergency communication system and uh, a lot of, a lot of aspects of the fire department. Um, but one of those is certainly response times um, to to the bulk of your community, so. So that is important financially as well as is just for health and and safety outcomes. So so we look at four minute drive time, five minute drive time in yellow and and six minute drive time in red. Understanding that, you know, there are going to be some areas in the city that kind of fall outside that four minute response threshold. Then on the right hand side, we're looking at. You know, the combined area of the city, given the west station and potential location of the central station. You know, what area of the city falls within that four minute, the magic four minute number that NFPA is is looking uh, or is recommending for us to provide. And we're overlaying that with the the hotspots, uh, or the heat map of where calls have occurred historically within the city. But the previous ten thousand, ten thousand emergency response calls. So, um, and we're providing a little bit of data in the caption there, if we if we stayed at the uh, the current location. Um, what this is telling us is that is that seventy eight point five percent of your calls occur within that four minute estimated drive time. Now, we, you know, we don't know uh, what percentage of calls are going to fall within the overall goal, given turnout time, given. Uh, the dispatching time, you know, those things are also also play a role in the overall. Overall response time, remember, but but in terms of the four minute drive time goal, um, that's the area of the city that that is falls within that. Now, as I said before, the area is a little bit unimportant, because a lot of these, the area extends way over the bridge and, you know. That's nice for Wisconsin, but it's not primary, the primary concern of the citizens of Winona.
Um, is that four minute drive time with both stations? Are we primarily focusing on the one that we're talking about potentially?
The the one on the right hand side is four minute drive time from either station.
Okay.
Because because we don't want to uh, overlap too much and and part of the problems that we're going to see in some of these. Is that, you know, if we if we end up moving, uh, if we looked at the YMCA site, um, for instance. And we move all the way over to the bridge, you know, there's so much overlap between those four minute response time profiles from both of those buildings. And the and the east side of the facility, our east side of the city gets very little coverage or 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 worse coverage than they have now. And so so it's important when we're looking at um, at kind of the overall numbers that we're looking at both uh, both stations together. So, um, as I mentioned, seventy eight point five percent of the calls and under the current conditions. Which, you know, this, the the community is uh, is pleased with these days, and I think that's a. Um, you know, the ninety percent goal. I should preface, isn't frequently achieved. Um, in communities throughout the United States, that's a difficult yet attainable, yeah, that's kind of the the point of that ninety percent.
George has a question.
Yeah, just one, one quick question. How did you look at the railroad tracks playing into this equation? Cause we do have one engine company on the west side of the track and one, of course, on on the east side, if we want to say.
Well, it's essential to to leave uh, one engine company on the east and one on the west. Um, but um. Most of the calls that you get are not going to be interrupted by rail traffic, so it doesn't play a strong role here. That's that's, we're considering that under the the more catastrophic version of events. If 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 the central station is blocked from crossing the railroad tracks, then then the west station has to respond. Um, and it's important that they have that flexibility, but that doesn't play into, as I said, this isn't based on a time of day or. Or a weather pattern or traffic pattern or um, or an incident like that.
Uh, just a question for the chief. When a call comes in, you know, a fire related call, do both engine companies respond right away?
Is this working?
Yep.
Um, yeah, yep, so both uh, west and central will respond to a a reported fire or a fire alarm.
Cause it, cause if you're heading from Third Street, let's say, south of sixty-one and they are blocked on Mankato, which they would have been this morning for quite a while. Then I would imagine the west end would be notified to take the alternate route.
And and that happens. I I don't want to say daily, but it happens and it just affects our overall response time at the end of the year, so.
Thank you.
Graham, you had a question?
Yes, yes, um, thank you, I noticed um. There the our friends up on the bluff are not included in this map, people that live up in Windcrest and up above. So their primary access would be by the the. The road that goes up the bluff, how does that work for fire response?
Well, I I took a look at that, because I was curious and and um, some of the the very farthest properties, um, technically within some city limits. And I'm I'm not from Winona, so I don't know every place that we that there there is a house within city limits, but but the obvious subdivisions. Um, some of those can take ten minutes for response times to at the at the very. At the very end of those uh, those streets, according to this software. And again, as I said, when you know you have a call out there, you tend to, you know, be a little heavier on the gas pedal. Um, but but it's a significant difference away, you know, as those areas start to become more populous, you know, there's, it's not like there's a lot of land area in in the main part of Winona for. Uh, for more people to move, so new construction um, is either going to build in density. Or or move out towards that south side and at some point in time, as the chief said earlier, there's going to be a need for a third station. Whether that's in twenty years or two hundred years, um, remains to be seen, that's. That's up to the economics.
Okay, thank you.
Of construction out there. Um, Bruce mentioned to me that I I didn't preface this this first page by saying that this was the the situation at the existing central station. Um, so what we're looking at the screen right now is is about the the existing location. Um, so let's go to the next page, this one um, looks at uh, that the second item we look, the second. Option, which is the central school site, but we have this, the the west half of that block. And so we we looked at response times here, it moves us a little bit further towards the towards the west, but it also moves us down towards Broadway and Broadway is a little bit faster of a road to get. To get back east, so. Um, so the response time towards the east end of the city isn't affected that much, we're still, we're still in that. Um, reaching kind of the same areas within four minutes as we are at the current central site. Um, and we're uh, we're we're doing fairly well, um, uh, probably a little bit better than than the central site. Uh, the existing central station site with regards to getting to those those couple of hotspots. Um, so from a response time perspective, this isn't a, this isn't a bad location. Um, we're, we we do end up with a little bit fewer calls, we're at seventy seven point uh, nine percent of calls that are. Uh, that are achieved within that four minute threshold and that's just a a couple of those calls uh, out at the east end of the city where it's just, it's just outside that four minute uh, four minute area. The the challenge with the central school site is um, is more about size and as I understand it now, about availability. So, um, that's, uh, Mike actually is going to talk about that a little bit in the next section of our presentation. The third option uh, was looking at the the old YMCA. There was actively being demolished as we as we rolled into town to start the study. And um, this is one of those examples where this is just too far to the to the west uh, to be effective. Um, there's too much overlap between the the west station, uh, which we're not proposing to move and and where the, because really that's, we looked at that, too, that's in a really good spot. Um, in terms of response times to that side of the city, so, you know, you you want to keep hold of that piece of property. Over the long run, if you're, if you have an opportunity to purchase a a neighboring property, you know, might consider doing that just in case you need to expand. But uh, I digress, but but putting the the central station. Um, right there at the end of the bridge is is just too far to the west, and so we didn't actually take the next step and and look at what the combined response time would be and what percentage of calls would be in there. The fourth option we looked at was where the ambulances are parked, um, just a little bit west of the bridge. And as I said, that that's a pretty difficult place to get into. Um, to the point where. The existing west station um, was. Was getting to parts of downtown faster than than that little area. And the nice thing that that is perhaps a little bit uh, more sophisticated than what we used to do. Used to be when you were looking at station locations, you you put your compass on a piece of paper and you drew like a mile and a half radius around it. And it was, you know, it was just sort of like a circle and you're expecting to get in there in that amount of time, but but the reality is that every time you have to slow down and take a corner, it it costs you some seconds. And so this is really an example of that, there's so many corners you have to turn to get out of that part of town. Um, that it it costs you all the advantage you have by, um, so so that one's off the table pretty quickly. Also with the flood plain in the and uh, the rail lines there. Plenty of land area, but uh, but not workable from a bunch of other reasons. Uh, option number five uh, was at the East Rec Center on Zambro. And um, in this scenario, you're actually improving your response times out to the east side of the city a little bit from from where you're currently at. Um, you still have those hotspots within the the four minute threshold um, from this this potential location and. And you have relatively little overlap with that with that west station, um, which is, which is one of those things you want. You don't want to create a gap in the middle, you don't want to move so far, you have a gap in the middle, but. So there's some some amount of overlap that's going to end up happening naturally, um, but but you don't want very much of it, so that it's a good location from that perspective and. And for this one, um, the software estimates that you you'd get to eighty point one percent of your calls within four minutes. Option number six.
Make sure the screen is at the same side.
Yep. Option number six, looked all the way out at Galbrook Park and Gabbridge. Gabriel Park. And, no, I'm sorry, I skipped a page on my, on mine. Option number six was looking at Sinclair Park. Which, similar to the central school site, obviously it, it's, it's much more centrally located in the city. It's on Broadway. So that's a, a good option. Still close to those two hotspots and it covers 78.7% of calls. So you're, you're right there around where you are with the existing central site. This site is a park and, you know, that it's hard to lose a park in a community. Maybe there's an option for, for putting some parkland somewhere else. But with the central station's current site, there's a lot of residential properties on that block that you'd probably want to acquire. To build a combined public safety facility. Cause as I said, you know, a, a full block is really the appropriate size for something like this. And Mike is going to get into that in a lot more detail, but we were actually doing this, these two steps kind of simultaneously. We have to present them in some order. So I got to go first. But Sinclair Park would, would be a whole block. It's in a fairly good location. You know, about the same kind of response time profile as the existing station. But, but you notice there is, there is a noticeable dip from, from that Zumbro East Rec Center site. Which is, which is an important thing to consider. And then option seven is way out on the east side of town. And, and this one was just a little bit too far away, a little bit too far to the east. It actually, because of the, the constraints of the roadway system, it doesn't get you to the south side of town as fast as you would expect that it would. Because there's some, some bottlenecks there. And actually we're, we're outside, you can kind of see on the map on the right, we're kind of outside where that, one of those hotspots is. And so, so we took a big hit. We're, with this location, you're at 75.8% of calls. Would be achieved within that format threshold because one of those hotspots where you achieve, you know, receive like tons of calls is outside of that, that four-minute threshold. So all these things put together led us to recommend site option number five, which is at the East Rec Center site. It didn't take all the other sites off the table. But, but Mike's going to talk about some of the other site planning issues. The next step was really to look at how the building might fit on some of these locations, at some of these locations and what that would mean to the functionality of the facility. Before I step away, is there any more questions about the response times?
All of these options preserve our, our ISO rating, right? Preserve or enhance?
We're not in, we're not in charge of that, but we would not expect them to impact your ISO rating.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. So the next step really within knowing the sites and having the sites and having the basic area for the stations. Was to look at the sites that we've identified that made sense and see how the station flowed. And one of the, the initial things, and Mike talked about that, is, is really locating the fire, the base of the fire station in a way. They can get out to the main street in an efficient way. So that layout for the firebase predicates a lot of the initial layouts.
So like Craig mentioned, we looked at seven different sites around the city, but we actually only looked at layouts. Kind of site feasibility layouts for five of them, just because we were able to take a couple off the table because of the response time analysis. And the full block. So for the first site option, we looked at the, where the existing central station is. And there are two different layouts for this. One was kind of looking at if the station went somewhere else temporarily for a while. And you were able to demolish existing building, what that would look like. And the other option is trying to preserve the station and keep it operational during construction, which creates its own complexities. But as you can see, this is kind of a typical concept for an entire city block. So this would be the same kind of layout that you could maybe imagine at Sinclair Park or so on. This allows for the drive-through bays that are important to traditional contemporary fire station planning. It also provides appropriate amount of space for police staff and fire staff parking. And also response, firefight response parking, Jason, to the, the bays and the turnout gear entries area to the fire station side. One of the complexities though, with the full city block is there's still limited area for public parking area. So still need to identify some space or location for a public parking.
The biggest issue with this though, just to clarify it, and we, you'll see a lot of this. Biggest issue is acquiring all the additional property to make this work and then to try to temporarily relocate a fire station is not an easy task.
Yes, that's a good point. There's quite a few parcels that are not currently city-owned around the central stations.
I have a question real quick. Chad, how many properties do we not own on that block? How many would we have to acquire?
Nine, I think it's nine total.
Thank you. Thanks. So the next slide just showed kind of the same con, same concept, but flipped it around. Keep the station operational during construction. A lot of these concepts do have a stacked station, so there's probably squad garage in a lower level. Some shared functions and lobby on the first level and then be probably some fire, living quarters, dormitory. Dayroom stuff on the second level and some training areas. Next slide please. So this was a school. We took this one off the table now for a few reasons. One that you can only, space is so narrow that you can only have a backend apparatus bay configuration. There's really no room for staff or public parking and the adjacent school property is not likely to be able to be acquired. Cause it's now under development. Next slide. YMCA, we took this one off because of response time, but this does show a different layout. For a one, almost one block configuration. This site is also, I believe, under development now as some additional parking for a nearby company. Option four, this would be a great site if it wasn't located where it was, but it's ample site area. Good, good amount of space. You could do a lot of different configurations for the building here, even will fit a one-story building if that's an ideal. Configuration for the apartments, lots of room in the back for training and so forth. But better for flood risk railroads and response to. Next slide please. So this all led us to looking at option, site option five near the East Rec Center area. As kind of the preferred site option. We did a few different concepts for building layout. This has ample space for two-story facility. Ample area for firefighter parking, police parking, keeping those circulation paths for apparatus out of the public spaces. And also some additional space for outside training for fire activities. And option B showed, this shows slightly different building configuration. I believe this was a one-story configuration with just a lower level. And then this also shows the extent of kind of public staff parking area. Taken over that elementary school site if that were to become available.
And again, none of these, of course, are, have been finalized in any way. They're very conceptual. But we wanted to make sure we looked at all possible options, at least put them on the table and start that through how they.
Next one was pros and cons.
So the pros and cons a little bit, and Mike, I'm only more familiar with it. But a lot of it, you know, you could see, and we went through it various, various sites. Site five was the best for my response time location. We did identify closing off Zumbro as it came through, which gave some additional area and ability to lay out the station a little bit better. We did identify a con was the alternate location for the East Rec Center. But saying the truth, we've had some subsequent conversations afterwards. And we really feel that there could be some shared synergy between this public safety building and a community building. That would help to maybe even minimize some space needed. A lot of the police and fire departments we deal with, the train space we're talking about, sometimes that's gymnasium space. So a space that the community center could provide could actually support the rec center. We think the block is big enough that it could support some of that. So that'll be some of the things we talk about. But site, the second one, when we took, looked at the site six, it was just had to do with the location, things like that for response time. And then I think the third site we ranked was site one, which was on Third Street. It maintained the current fire response site, but it was just a limited site. And there were some additional acquisition cost to that site. So this was a summary. I also would like to tell the mayor and council too, that we're finalizing the report for this project, for the study. The, we didn't want to finish it until we've gotten all of your comments and input, which I think has been very valuable tonight. Because some of the questions that you've all posed, we're going to make sure we incorporate some of that clarity into the final report as well. The next piece is really the cost estimate. And we look at, you know, we look at current standards. It's not the material that you construct these facilities out of. They're 24/7 facilities. You know, the fire, the police, they're, they're, they're taking a lot of wear and tear that most facilities, that most of your, your nine-to-five type facilities don't. So the, the materials have to be durable. It doesn't mean they have to be expensive materials. They just need to be durable. So based on similar projects and similar cost per square foot, we came up with a low and a high range for construction cost. The 17.5 to 19.5 roughly is that construction cost of the building. Based on that size of that building and where it runs. And there's different price ranges. Squad garage, apparatus bay has different price than a firing range or an office space. And we calculate all that in the final estimate. We add contingencies to these. So when you're doing a study, the carpet, the type of carpet hasn't been selected, the type of life fixtures. All the various minute detail that we get into during a design process, it's not been figured out yet. So we like to leave a design contingency. And then anybody that's ever done a construction project, there's something that comes up during construction. So you have got to have a contention. Your goal is to use very little. As a matter of fact, we have a fire station under construction now. Let's use just a fraction of the contingency. So the goal is to use very little. It's to have it as a safety net if needed. You add those together, the contingencies and the estimated construction cost, become up with about 19 million to 21 million dollars. Or a 2022 construction value. Those values do take into consideration some of the fluctuation we've recently seen. As I mentioned, when I first started, you could do research, typically most things have shown that construction costs, you know, it dips. It goes up, it dips a little, but historically, using anywhere from a four and a half to 5% per year inflationary factor. Has been typically the average. You could look year by year by year and construction costs slightly increased. Material cost, gasoline cost, all those factors that affect the cost of it. However, as I mentioned earlier, between 20 and 21, or 21 to 22, actually, we saw this tremendous spike. So right now, these numbers are trying to take that into consideration as we go forward. So then the other, the other piece that was added to this is soft costs. Sorry, I should have identified soft costs. So soft costs are anything that's not built, so the architectural engineering fees, the furniture in the building. The, the commissioning, the testing to make sure that mechanical systems are working appropriately by, by state codes, the commissioning of the systems. The geotechnical, to go out and check the soil to make sure there's no soil issues when the building is being built, that is separate. Those are, there's a number of factors, number of things that are involved that were considered soft costs through outside the construction number. And that's what that roughly 3.4 or 4.2 million dollars represents is the soft cost for all the things that are not included. Even appliances, appliances would typically put in soft cost because there's no reason to have a contractor provide a markup. Why not just purchase those directly and have them installed? So we try to do things like that to minimize some of the cost. This also does take into consideration. Oh, I think it was last, I want to say it was last year, the League of Minnesota Cities has now adapted, adopted. That any essential building, public safety building is exempt from material taxes. We've done that on projects in the past. When we did Rochester's Police Station, city attorney looked at it and actually their fire station some years ago as well. Looked at it and said, we're exempt from these material taxes. It requires a certain amount of paperwork and bookkeeping. But it allows to save, when we did, when we did Rochester's Fire Station some years ago. It was about an $8 million project and we saved about $250,000 in material taxes. So again, that takes this into consideration as well when we put this estimate together. I think that's, we tried to go through this in clear, in clarity and enough depth to hopefully not bore you. But to provide you the detail needed, because this is a difficult decision. You've got, you, you've got, you've got phenomenal people. I mean, I, I can't show enough respect to the public safety, to the fire and police department, the things they do for our communities. And we didn't get into it extensively, but if you go into MinCancer and, and things like this, you're finding the state, there's a lot of initiatives nowadays. Try to minimize the carcinogen exposure that the fire department goes through. We're trying to address that. You need to address that in your facility. You lease space from the, from the county, that's absolutely substandard for what your police do. And it, it's, it's important, I think, as we go forward, to make sure that we always understand that their, their operations are very important. And what they provide to us is important. And then one side note, employee retention and finding individuals. We're working with some cities up in the metro right now where their, their police officers are leaving and going to other departments. Because they feel better about the environment that they're in because of the working conditions. So anyway, any of all these things are things, it's, it's a difficult decision and we're here to support you as much as possible. I would like to say too, that we have had some minor conversation. Knowing that this site was initially planned for parks and wrecks as well. We've had some, some conversations with ISG about the idea of trying to make this a site that could accommodate. All of these community operations. And again, as I mentioned earlier, I think there's very, there's strong viability. It could work well. I think with that, we're open for whatever questions you want.
George, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. Very good presentation. I've heard a couple in the past and they're very, very good information. And you're right, it's going to be a tough decision. But as we look at, at this Zumbro Street block. Is there going to be room for, you know, the children that come there now? You know, they play after school in, into the evening. In the summertime, I believe they come like during the day. Will they still be able to use this facility for their activities? I like, you know, I like the idea of the community center, police, fire, everybody coming together. I think if there's a way we can involve the kid, the children in there as well too. I think that's a definite, a very, very strong point. But will they, will there be room for them? Will their activities still, will they still be able to do their activities at that site?
Mayor, or mayor, councilman, I, I'd like to say definitively yes. We need to do, we need to do an analysis to see how well it works. And we also think that re-engaging the community and re-engaging Winona in some of these discussions, as we do that, it's going to be an important step. We think from preliminarily in looking at the building footprint, we think we can make that all work. But we got to jump into it and really, really assess it. I would hate to go out on a limb right now and say, oh, absolutely. But we know what the priorities are and we know we can make, we, we feel like right now we can make that work well.
Cause I think that's going to be a very, very large challenge for this council to make as to what we do with that part of the building. So.
Thank you, George. Michelle, you had a question?
I just want to say I've enjoyed working with you. I think when we first went through the interview process, you guys jumped out as someone. Not only was competent and capable, but also kind of fun to work with. And I know that our two chiefs have worked with you more than I have, but I've heard only good things. So I really want to thank you and your whole team for the work you've done for us in this first phase. I do want to say for the public, this is not something that's new. We've been talking about this, at least at the city level for years. I think the first time it came up was five years ago. I sat on that jail advisory committee. And it was made pretty clear at that point that the county wasn't going to fund rehab of that building. And let's be honest, the location itself is not easily rehabbable. I mean, it's made out of solid concrete walls for the purpose that it's a jail. So even if we stayed there, I think we talked about just the immediate cost being around $4 million. But that doesn't get us what we need to make it a safe working environment, hot rooms and so on for the police. And then you look at paying rent. And then we started talking about the improvements we need to make to the fire department, which is in the millions of dollars. It's not ADA compliant. It doesn't meet basic equity needs. It's, it needs new windows, new roofing, all of the things that you need to do, not to mention HVAC. And it seemed from a logical perspective, instead of paying rent, which we don't really know what that amount would be in the future. But we know it'd be something north of 210,000 a year. which we don't really know what that amount would be in the future, but we know it'd be something north of two hundred and ten thousand a year. We could take that money and build a community building that from my perspective is more friendly. I know I've walked people down to the police department that need to make reports and they're doing it in the lobby of the police department where they have to share with anyone who's in there what their issues are, which is uncomfortable. And it's not a friendly location, partly because it's attached to a jail. And I find that our police do do enforcement, but they're also outreach and education. And they're a friendlier face than a jail lends to them, to be honest. And it's, it's not very accessible. And likewise, the, the police department is, I mean, the fire department, you have no sense of where to go when you enter. There's no one to greet you. There's no, you're, it's not clear. I think in the past, they've had to carry people up in wheelchairs to meet with people. It's just not ideal. Obviously, they both serve their purposes for the length of time we had them, but it's time for us as a community to have something better. And quite frankly, I always think training and education for our police and fire is paramount, not to mention improved workspaces, which means we will get the best talent wanting to come and work here. I do know that recruiting to a police department, when they have to show the facility they're in is very challenging. Not to mention we have inadequate storage, which means files are stored in water logged storage areas. And I think if we stayed where we were, we would end up with our police department on multiple levels, which for a variety of reasons doesn't work. And so for me, this project was always something I was going to support, but I really appreciate you taking the time to explain to us why the locations look good or look bad. And the perspective that we need to take into account is that, that fire department's location for, for calls. Because obviously people have come to depend on their presence. And I know doing ride alongs with the police, the fire department is always there first. And we certainly don't want to make that less likely. So I just wanted to tell you guys all, thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to us moving on to the next steps to figure out how this is going to fit in the community. What the true cost might be, what other collaborations are available, like with Southeast Tech for fire training, for advanced police training. We have resources and locations and things that I think can work. And if, if we're able to get a community center, they're, they're great. I do know there are other options for the community center. It is in no way off the table. In fact, I believe that by putting the community center in the same pile as, as a public safety building, we actually are able to pull on some more state and federal dollars because it'll fulfill a, a broader need of our community. And so I actually think by pulling these three projects or two projects, we're going to end up with a much better option for federal and state funding and, and also fulfill the needs of the larger community as a whole. Whether it's at that exact location, once you look at it, or it's at another location, I don't think, I want to be clear to the senior center, this is in no way removes their facility from the table. It just opens us back up to a conversation about other options that maybe in the past we had looked past.
Thank you, Michelle. Eileen, we haven't had a chance to hear from you. Is there anything you'd like to ask or comment on?
Um, yes, I mean, I have, it, it's obvious from the data that there is a lot of advantages to the top location that has been presented of where East End Rec, Rec is right now. I have a, a lot of concerns about that. But I, I think that many of those questions would wait until we see a proposal that would show what that looks like. How that would work. I think from a financial standpoint, having one facility that has overlapping and multiple uses is much more efficient than having multiple buildings that we have to maintain that have, you know, lim, more limited uses. But I really appreciate the presentation, all the information. I think like Michelle said, especially with our fire staff, the facility that they're in right now is not appropriate for what a modern fire station needs. And the fact that we don't even have a sprinkler system in our own fire station, I think is really the only thing one needs to know, to know that it needs, there need to be changes. So thanks for the information and I look forward to discussing what, what we want to do.
Thanks, Eileen. George, you had something?
Yeah, just one more thing. Chief Williams, just so people know that this is the police department. It's where the officers will be. We're not housing prisoners there. We're not booking nobody there. That's all. Could you explain all that, well, work chief?
Certainly. Mayor and council, this would, would be solely the police, fire and possibly the community center. When we did go to Fred Lee and to Sartell, they did actually have holding cells built within their facilities. And we would not, we would not utilize that space for, for any type of holding. We would still utilize the Winona County Law Enforcement Center. So anybody that would have to be transported for any type of booking or any type of arrest would still go to the, to the law enforcement center and go to the, the new county jail. And again, I cannot emphasize enough that the jail is a standalone jail facility. It is not going to include any more spacing for the Winona County Sheriff's Office Administrative or deputy staff, nor is it going to provide any space for us. It is a jail in a jail alone and will only connect to the existing law enforcement center. Nobody will be booked in at the, a potential new public safety building. They would all be transported to the Winona County Jail.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, George. You know, this past summer I was invited to go on the, the tours in Sartell and Fridley. You really don't, actually even before that, I was given tours of both police department and central fire. In going to the newer facilities, it is eye opening as to all the thought that goes into these facilities. Simple things like the walls in the police department, they get beat up. They have equipment on their hips. They have keychains. Those tear up the drywall constantly. The doors are beat up. The evidence room, if an officer is testing fentanyl, he has to have someone across the hall sitting there watching to make sure that that officer that's doing the testing, because we have inadequate venting in that area, just to make sure that, that officer doesn't pass out and or pass away. That is a huge safety issue. You know, in terms of fire, we went into, I can't remember which facility it was, but there was a sauna in there. And I thought, oh, boy, these guys really got it good up here. But then I learned why they have that. That is to remove toxins out of their bodies. One of the, the primary things that fire department and fire staff have to look at is removing those carcinogens that they've been exposed to so heavily during a call. So, you know, one of the places even had a a table and chairs in the hot zone within the apparatus bay. So that you tear your turn off, turnout gear off and you can just sit and chill for a minute. And or do whatever, talk, figure out, you know, talk about the last call, whatever it was. But they, they literally split not only the HVAC, but they split the buildings so that there's hot zones. And then there's cool zones after they've been decontaminated so that our fire staff can be safe in those areas. Another glaring thing that we noticed is we don't have many women on the fire or the police staff. Part of that has to do with the facilities that we have available. If we have a full-on women's locker room or a unisex area or, you know, a women's bathroom. I mean, those things are important, especially when it comes to recruiting. Right now, I would guess that we have a lot of female applicants who aren't looking in our direction because we don't have the facilities that would accommodate them properly. So there, there's many different things. Now, in relation to the potential impact on the East End Rec, this is the part that I've been racking through in my head the most. How do we do this without displacing others? Because quite honestly, that building right now is just as important to their mental and physical safety, their mental and physical health as fire and or police is because it is used heavily by some of our citizens in town, just as heavily as some of the other facilities that we use. And so I really want to make sure that as we're going through this process, we do get public input. I also want to make sure that we try to look at it from a positive light. We have to look at it with opportunity in mind. We can't look at this project as a whole as something that's going to be detrimental in, in one area or another of the services that we offer to the community. I think that we need to look at this. And this is, you know, I'm breaking it down, but I literally can envision one of the officers before a shift or maybe after he just punches in, is over in the basketball court knocking around, knocking down some threes with some kids before he heads out or she heads out on their shift. I see the opportunity in the buildings that we toured to create that shared space, to create community space. One of the places we went to had a beautiful foyer area and a community room. So that meetings could be held there. It can be rented. It can be used by the community for various things as well as for police and fire. We have to look, and I know both chiefs totally understand this, but we have to look as, at our community as a whole. They don't want to be pariahs. They want to be part of our community. They want to be part of what we have going on here. They don't want to be alienated. They don't want to be pushed away. And at the same time, we want our community to be able to accept police department and fire department and public safety as a whole, as a need for our community. Where it's just as important as Park Rec and or Friendship Center. So these things, I, I hope that the public as a whole, the council as well as we're going through this process, staff as well, that we all have the opportunity to look at this as a benefit to the community. We're not taking away something. We're going to add to it. That is my hope. And I hope that we can all work through this together. So this is very first steps. I know there's going to be tons of questions. There might be some people upset about it. But we have to look at this long term. And I think we have to look at it for the safety of the community as a whole, regardless if it's Park Rec, Friendship Center, Fire or Police. So Bruce, thank you for your professionalism. Thank you to your team for getting to this point. We, I know we'll be working with you along the way here. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Appreciate your time tonight. And we are available if you have any other questions.
Do we, as council, would we care to discuss the options that are on the table right now and have an open public discussion about that? Steve?
Yes. Excellent presentation. Thank you. I probably know the, I'm the person that probably knows the least about this in the room. But I, I think there's a clear attractiveness to, is it, I'm sorry, Zumbro Street? Option five. Five A, five B. There's some things that we don't know. There's some things we don't understand. There's some land acquisition that we don't understand. Certainly, the, the heat maps are important that we're, we're meeting our, our basic core requirements of, of, of response time and protecting our community. I think it's very important that we have further discussion about the future of, of East End Rec. I, I'm, I'm, I'd be concerned about displacing, just the concept of, of displacement. I'm not, I, so I'd, I'd want to very much explore how we can bring, bring in the recreational needs into this proposed safety center. I'll, I'll certainly say that it, it is, if government has, has a, a number one function, it is, it is protection. It's protection of life and property. And that's fire and police. But, but certainly there's, there's a need for recreation and, and area to gather as well. I hold that very important. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to go with Pam and then Michelle.
Yes, I was concerned in reading this today, reading over this today to realize how how poor is the ventilation and how poor are the facilities that we're asking police and fire people to spend their working lives in. And that, that was really disturbing. So I really think that that's a we have to be able to protect the health of the people who are protecting our health. So I'm, I'm really into that. I like what I'm hearing about the synergy with community events and, and fire and, and police all in the same place. I look forward to continuing that discussion.
There you go. Thank you, Pam. Michelle?
Just for next steps, I think we should have either a public forum or a public input session that allows community members to make themselves heard and understood and ask questions. And I think we should also have an item come back before council that talks about the next phase of design and what that would look like from the BKV group, what that cost might be and what it would encompass so that we, we have some more information for moving forward. But I think that public input or form, however you want to coordinate, that would be I mean, vital for the next step. And in, in my opinion, I don't know where the rest of the council feels, but I think that would be important.
Do you have something, Tim?
Mayor and council, if I'm hearing a common theme, I believe obviously that we would like some more public input on that, on this topic. Certainly as it relates to the East End Recreation Location. So what, what staff can do in, in short order is do our best perhaps to bring back more information at the February seventh council meeting, which is a week from today regarding that, like what, what would be a format for public input and public forum type settings? We could work with BKV as Bruce indicated earlier, perhaps, and also with ISG who did our community center planning to see if there would be some preliminary work that could be done for council. So we don't go into, you know, we don't get ahead of ourselves in the sense that we go into design development that there would certainly been a question posed tonight about whether or not the community center and public safety building can exist in, in this location. Is there a recommendation that we could bring back to council then for that cost? Because there's going to be a, a cost associated with that. And then, you know, based on that public input and, and public comment, then we would proceed to the next steps. Which in, in, in most cases, we would then go into schematic design, design development, you know, construction documents. And along that way, you know, looking at our funding sources. But I think the central question is, we, we want some, that's what I'm hearing is we, we need some public input on this concept and then before we move into, into that phase. So I think I think staff can do our best to try and pull that information together and, and bring a recommendation or information to the February seventh meeting.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. One quick question. I'll probably get this question, I'm sure. Looking at the sketches and stuff, and maybe this may be a question for Chief Williams or Chief Fiddle. Say, say this moves forward hypothetically and it's at this location. And there, and the apparatus trucks, the ladder truck leaves, leaves, enters Fifth Street from the way I look at this and turns. I'm sure this neighborhood, their first concern is sirens. Am I going to listen to a siren every time? How does that work? So I know tomorrow morning when my phone rings, I'm going to get this question. So how do I answer that? Or what, have they looked at that? Or, you know, I'm not familiar with that side of it.
Mayor and council, typically Broadway is, is, you know, I if I could apologize to residents that live on Broadway, they would be the ones I'd need to apologize for because typically the sirens
Don't get turned on?
Are running, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And if it was a, a siren issue, I, I would want to live as close as I could to the fire station because typically the captain in charge of that is still trying to get everything put on and they're zipping out the door. And they usually don't activate the, the sirens for a number of blocks.
Right.
And they, they, I used to do it just out of pure just not to alienate neighbors. So and, and it, it's all time dependent and traffic dependent. And typically the traffic is, is worse during the day, which isn't, you know, alarming as far as siren use. It's the two in the morning, the four in the mornings. And typically the captains will adjust just based off traffic.
Right. So Chief Fiddle, I'm correct in saying it, it's going to most likely be very similar to what we already have?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor.
Eileen, you had a question?
Yes, I just wanted to echo the need for a time where we can get some public input on what's being proposed. So I think that is our top priority. I would also feel a lot better if I could, once we have, if, if, this is all, if we're pursuing Zumbro Street as the top choice of If, if this is all, if we're pursuing Zumbro Street as the top choice of a location. I would feel a lot better if there was also some. Example plan of what the whole process looks like. Because I'm thinking if we're saying, okay, we're going to build. We're going to put fire and police in this new place. We have to build this big building. The rec center is going to move all these things. There needs to be a really detailed plan for how the programs at East Rec will be adjusted. So that those programs are still offered to community members. This would have been something we needed to address even with building in addition to East End Rec. But that's my biggest concern is are people going to completely lose programming during a potentially long construction period? So I would want to have some information about what that could look like. Obviously it can't be super detailed if it's, you know, theoretical. But just to make some folks feel a little bit more comfortable about how services will be offered. And then just about the sirens, I live half a block from Broadway. And I would bet I hear sirens a lot more than the folks that live right next to the fire stations do.
Thank you, Eileen. Those are good points. There was a lot of head nodding as you were talking about that and Chad's taking notes. So, thank you. George?
Yes, we totally do need to hear from the public on this. When we have something a little more concrete, I would like to have the BKV representatives, if they could be. At this hearing as well too. You guys have the deep information on it to share. And you know, looking at both fire stations right now, they're both in residential neighborhoods. The west is, the one on Third Street is. And I have never heard any complaints about fire engines blowing sirens when they're coming out. Just that the lights shine in their, their house at times. But Zumbro Street being a residential neighborhood, they're in a residential neighborhood right now, both stations are so. But I think that's something that we certainly can work out, so.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Mayor and Council, one, one other comment, I guess, that I wanted to make and Bruce alluded to this a little bit. Obviously, public comment is a theme we've heard, but I, I do want to make sure that we do note that. In the option at Zumbro Street, there is a private property owner to the west of the East Recreation Center. That certainly, I think it'd be important that we engage them in a conversation as well, not to, just to make sure that. We say that and not just assume that. That that private property would be part of a public forum. There may be some. Meetings that need to take place or some conversations that need to place, take place with that private property owner.
Thank you, Chad. Any other comments, questions, considerations? No? Okay. I want to thank everyone tonight, staff, chiefs, both of you. Thank you for being here. BKV. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your time. Appreciate all your hard work on this. And then council, thank you as well.
Thank you.
With that, we'll end.
Thank you.
You bet. Absolutely. We will end the informational session. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next week.